Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Like to call the meeting to order. And in doing so, like to start with any council announcements. Mayor West.
Well, thank you very much. I just, I had the pleasure the other day of being invited to Tim Hortons for, to launch their Smile Cookie campaign. And so I did bring some Smile Cookies for members of council who are here. And for the rest of those in the audience, there's maybe 10 left. So it could be the Hunger Games of Smile Cookies. But whoever first come, first serve, whoever would like one. But they are very beautiful. And I did have the opportunity at, at the Tim Hortons that we were at to actually make my own Smile Cookie. I was very artistic about it, but they were equally delicious, though. And I will say that the proceeds from this campaign in the, the Tim Hortons in Vaughan and Richmond Hill are going to York Region Food for Learning, which is a great charity that we learned a little bit about at the regional council meeting the other day. That helps make sure that kids are coming to school fed in the morning. And so I think it runs, the program runs until the 24th of November. And so if you're into sugary and delicious treats like Smile Cookies, please make sure you go to a Tim Hortons and help to support York Region Food for Learning. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Tree.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we're going to host our World for Food Bank Drive in Argamis Community Centre. Winter season, holidays is coming, so Christmas and also New Year's coming as well. So we are looking for more food supplies for our local food bank and help people who need that type of service. Thank you. If you do have additional canned food at your home, please bring this to Argamis Community Centre. Bye, regards. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone watching us online and here in council chambers. I just have one, one announcement. Today, November 20th, is Alert Ready Day across Canada. As in May, I brought you this information as well to try and prevent a lot of people from jumping in fear of their chairs, thinking we're being invaded. So at 12:55 a.m. today, all our electronic devices will go off. You know, with that sound. If you're hard of hearing or you're hard of sight, you, it comes to you in another way in another announcement. So be ready, 12:55 a.m. today in Ontario. Our Alert Ready Across Canada sound will sound. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the councillor meant to say 12:55 p.m. today. P.M., p.m., yes. Yeah. So it's going to be happening between noon and 1 p.m.
Oh, yes. 12:55. My bad. It's 12:55 p.m.
And as it turns out, if your phone is off at that time, when you turn it on, it's going to start screaming at you. So just to let you know. Councillor Davidson.
Thank you. I just want to say on Monday, we had in Ward 1, a meeting about some roadwork. And 45 or so people showed up and staff was there. The mayor was there. And I'm only mentioning this because I do hear from people that the city doesn't care or what, who listens to me. It was such an example of this city listening to residents and democracy at work. And I know we all hear nasty things about democracy and government. But honestly, I feel like Richmond Hill really goes the extra yard to talk to residents and engage. And I, this is sort of my message to other residents that, you know, talk to your councillor, you'll get the information you want. We never have anything to hide. And I was, I was proud to be a councillor that day. And I mean, it wasn't a pleasant meeting at all times, but it's what government should be. So I just want to thank staff for coming, the mayor for coming, and all the residents who took the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, council announcements? I do have a quick announcement. And actually, I was going to mention about the Ontario Alert Ready Test. So thank you, councillor. Last night, I had the pleasure of being able to give a talk at the Historical Society. And it was, it went really well. I was appreciative that they asked me for my take on, on my connections with Richmond Hill. But I do want to give a little shout out that they'll be having their holiday meeting on December 5th, Thursday, starting at 6:30 p.m. They have a lucky draw as part of their holiday event. And there's three different prizes. And one of them really caught my attention, that people just might be interested to. So out of the three prizes, they have a Richmond Hill Town circa 1900 by Mr. Savard, Fred Savard. They also have a handcrafted afghan. But what was really interesting is they also have a peony root. This will be one of the raffle prizes that's given away. And you're thinking, well, what's so great about a peony root? But this actually comes from peonies that were planted by the mother of Prime Minister John Diefenbaker back in 1895. So if you wanted a piece of history, they have a raffle and it'll be part of their holiday soiree over at the Richmond Hill Library. And that'll be on December 5th. So those are my, all I had. Any, nobody else for announcements? Okay. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, who would like to move that? Oh, sorry. You are correct. Thank you. I was just checking to make sure that the clerk was paying attention here. Introduction of emergency time-sensitive matters. Seeing none. The adoption of the agenda. Who would like to move that? Councillor Shu. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Disclosure of pecuniary interests and general nature thereof. Seeing none. And identification of items requiring separate discussion. Mayor West.
I'd like to pull 11.5, please.
11.5. I should mention that 11.6, 11.7, and 11.9 are already pulled. I should have mentioned that off the hop. But, okay. Next, councillor Chan.
I'd like to pull, Mr. Chair. Item 11.3, renewal of end support services relating to the S C R M. And 11.4, non-competitive acquisition water meter supply installation and maintenance. And, oh, a long one. And as well as the 11.12 Richmond Hill Service Charter. So three items, 11.3, 11.4, and 11.12. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a few items still left on the agenda. Is there anybody else who would like to, councillor Shu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to pull out 11.7, traffic regulation changes on city streets.
Right. So there is a delegation on that. So it's automatically.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Given that, then if we can have an adoption for the remainder of the items, which would be 11.1, 11.2, 11.8, 11.10, 11.11, and 11.13. Who would like to move that? Councillor Sullivan. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay. We do not have any public hearings, but we do have a couple of presentations. The first presentation is by Dan Tervesky, the Director of Infrastructure Planning and Development. I believe he's being maybe joined by Hubert Ng. Is that what I read correctly here?
Unfortunately, Hubert's not here today.
Unfortunately. Okay. So it looks like you are solo today for what we believe to be a 20-minute presentation. Please go ahead.
I'm going solo. All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mayor West, and members of council. I'm excited to be here this morning to provide you with an update on the progress for our Traffic Safety and Operations Strategy for 2024. So as part of, all right, I've got to try to learn to use this quicker. There we go. So as part of my presentation today, I'll be taking you through some of the results of our 2024 Traffic Calming Programme. And I'll also provide you with an update on some of the other key initiatives and actions that we had identified in 2024. And I'll then wrap up my presentation with a brief outline of our next steps and actions for 2025. So just as a refresher, the Traffic Safety and Operations Strategy was approved by council in December of last year with the aim to provide a proactive, consistent, and measurable approach to traffic safety across the city. T-SOS also identified a number of short-term initiatives, programs, and actions to be completed in 2024, and I'll touch on these in more detail over the next several slides. So as part of the T-SOS, an initial citywide network screening was completed, which was used to identify 18 priority traffic calming locations for 2024. So these locations were approved by council in March of this year, and 17 of the 18 locations are now installed. Unfortunately, one location was delayed due developer activity on the street, but will be completed in early 2025. So as you can see from the slide, there was a variety of treatments that were deployed across the 17 locations, and oftentimes in combination. To evaluate the effectiveness of these treatments, each location was monitored and before and after data was collected. So what did we find? So based on the monitoring data collected, I am very happy to report that we have seen improved speed limit compliance at all 17 locations, with an average speed reduction ranging from 2% to 22%. Traffic calming measures have also resulted in a reduction of overall traffic volumes at all locations, ranging from between 6% to 17%. Now, I do want to note locations that have speed cushions in combination with other measures appear to be the most effective, yielding higher reductions in both speed and volume. So in addition to data collection, staff also solicited feedback from the public regarding the traffic calming measures installed. This was done through the six public education sessions that we held this fall, as well as online survey conducted between October 10th and November 7th, which yielded over 145 responses. So the overall response to traffic calming has been positive. However, staff have identified some areas for refinement based on the feedback received. And these will be outlined in a little bit more detail on the next slide. So the majority of the feedback received was focused around four items. Firstly, the use of bollards, and in particular, the use of bollards to buffer edge lines or to extend curbs at intersections. We also heard that some of the traffic calming zones were maybe too short, and that at some locations motorists are attempting to or are able to avoid speed cushions. We also received some concerns from residents about parking prohibitions related to cycling facilities. So in response to this feedback, staff will be exploring modifications at the 18 locations that were installed in 2024, as well as for any traffic calming locations to be installed in the future. So some of the modifications the staff will be considering include limiting the use of bollards to gateway treatments unless absolutely necessary, extending traffic safety zones from intersection to intersection where feasible, adding bollard gateway treatments at speed cushioning locations where feasible and appropriate, and using more permanent treatments such as concrete to extend curbs at intersections where, again, feasible. I also want to note that for any future locations where portions of cycling facilities are to be installed in conjunction with traffic calming measures, staff will treat these lanes as buffers only in the interim until such a time that the cycling facility can be installed in its entirety and dedicated as such. Beyond the traffic calming measures, another, a number of other key traffic safety initiatives and actions were identified for 2024, the majority of which have been now completed or are well underway. As an example, a number of existing traffic safety policies were updated and new policies were created based on guidance from the T-SOS. These were approved by council in March of this year and have been in use ever since. Staff has also updated the citywide traffic calming network screening earlier this year. And this updated screening was used to identify the 18 priority traffic calming locations for 2025. These locations were presented to the public in fall and are being brought forward for your approval through the staff report that's before you today. Staff also conducted a community safety zone audit earlier this year, which identified 80 community safety zone locations across the city. Installation of these zones is well underway, and 35 will be in place by the end of the year, with the remainder to be installed in 2025, in time to support the rollout of the city's automated speed enforcement programme, which is currently targeted for 2026. Staff also conducted traffic safety public education sessions and began work on a social media campaign for the city. As I've already noted, two rounds of public education sessions have been conducted this year. Six were conducted in the spring between February and March, followed up by another six that were conducted in the fall between September and October. These sessions were used to provide information on the T-SOS and the priority traffic calming locations, as well as to solicit feedback from residents. In addition, work has also started on our social media campaign, which includes the development of public education videos that will be rolled out to the public by the end of 2024. Staff also updated the city's traffic safety webpage to provide the latest information on the T-SOS, our updated policies, our presentation material, and additional traffic calming information. This website was also used to conduct public, our public surveys, and was updated to streamline our traffic inquiry intake through one point of contact at traffic.inquiries@richmondhill.ca. So moving forward, we'll continue to do updates to the website on a regular basis as new information becomes available. And we'll also be working on developing a user-friendly intake portal through our intergov system. So earlier this year, staff also explored the opportunity to implement a slowdown lawn sign programme for Richmond Hill. However, through our investigation, it was determined that a lawn sign programme would pose a number of issues for the city, including sign proliferation, visibility issues, and excess waste. The programme could also become very labour-intensive in terms of programme administration and enforcement of the city's signed by law. So instead, staff have identified an alternative programme through their benchmarking called a Boulevard Silhouette Slowdown Sign Programme. That's a mouthful. My apologies. Which will achieve similar objectives to lawn sign programme while minimizing some of the challenges that have identified. So under this programme, signs would be strategically deployed in areas where children are often present and will act as visual guides, prompting drivers to slow down or remain vigilant. However, with this programme, the location and placement of these signs will be determined by city staff, and signs would be reusable, which would help to minimize waste and minimize the long-term cost to the city. So as you can see from the image on this slide, this programme is currently utilized in a number of other municipalities, including the city of Vaughan. And staff are seeking approval from council to run this programme in 2025. So progress has also been made to expand the city's pole-mounted radar board programme to five locations per ward. The equipment has been ordered and is expected to be delivered by the end of this year or the beginning of 2025. The boards will be deployed at the locations that were approved by council earlier this year. So I do want to note that the new radar boards that we're getting are cloud-based and will allow us to gather real-time data and retrieve it from the web. And in that same vein, our traffic engineering software also received a cloud update this year in partnership with York Region and is already helping to improve staff efficiency when carrying out traffic assessments. So finally, staff also conducted a citywide screening for speed limit reductions and pedestrian crossings across the city. I'm pleased to let you know that we have identified 13 new pedestrian crossing locations and 17 speed limit reduction zones for 2025. So in terms of next steps, staff are seeking approval from council for the 18 priority traffic calming locations for 2025, as well as the Boulevard Silhouette Slowdown Lawn, Slowdown Sign Programme for next year. Once approved, staff will also be working to finalize designs for the new traffic calming locations based on all the public input received this fall. And we'll also be working on modifications to a number of the existing traffic calming locations that were installed in 2024. Staff will also continue to work on completing any outstanding items that were noted throughout this presentation, including the delivery of the expanded radar board programme, implementation of the slowdown sign programme, installation of the remaining community safety zones, and completion of the designs for the 13 new pedestrian crossing locations. Staff will also continue to implement the T-SOS in 2025 through ongoing monitoring, data collection, and completion of updated screenings for 2026. So I also want to close out that one additional resource was identified in the T-SOS for 2025. This resource, along with the capital budget required to continue the T-SOS implementation, will be brought forward separately through the city's normal 2025 capital budget process, or budget process. So thank you for your time. That concludes my presentation, and I guess I'll open the floor to any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, at this time, we'd like to bring it back to council for discussion and to receive the presentation with thanks. Who would like to start us off? Councillor Shu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to receive this presentation, and I would like to have some comments on this. So first of all, I appreciate the effort made by the traffic team in implementing the T-SOS this year. And we all understand that, and I'm happy to see that. This is quite effective to reduce speed and traffic volume on certain roads to enhance safety of commuters and nearby residents. My first question is on slide number seven. It shows that the city will now make a few modifications, like the conversion of bike lane to open shoulder to allow on-street parking, the edge light bullocks replaced by gateway bullocks, and also the removal of the curb extension bullocks. This is all the very good initiative and the good modifications. Overall, within my ward, including the suburban community, has given mostly positive feedback on this modification. And just one thing. The only thing the community is concerned about is the potential exploration of the permanent concrete curb extension. So do you have any details of that, such as how tall of the curb? And something like that. How, how it works during the winter season when the curb covered by snow, something like that? Do you have any details on this through the chair?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, so when we talk about permanent curb extensions, right now, the bollards are used to basically tighten up the radii at intersections. So where we'd be doing that, we'd be doing that permanently with normal curb extensions. So we'd be extending the curb platform, the sidewalk platform, and putting in permanent curbs. Those aren't typically something we can do overnight. It'd likely be part of a capital project or a longer-term investment, right? Because there's usually typically drainage issues when you start to modify curbs like that. But, but we did acknowledge that the bollards were posing a challenge, so we would look at doing that permanently if required.
Okay. So do you know how tall of the curb is?
Standard curb. So we're not, these are not anything unusual. It's basically the standard curb that's on the road that would be extended out.
But I think that would be more dangerous than bullocks because this eye line level of drivers is may not notice there's a curb over there. And in the winter season, it may be covered by snow. Even in summer, it's too low for the drivers to see, to check there's a curb. There's a curve, right? So I think it's even more dangerous than bullocks, right? So I just want to get more information about how it works.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we could certainly provide you more information, but essentially, it's the extension of the road curbs and tightening up the radius at the intersection. So if the radius is currently 10 meters, it can be tightened up to seven and a half to bump out those extensions a bit and to make it easier for pedestrians to navigate and slow vehicles down at the same time while they're making the turn. And that's sort of the purpose of it. So, so this is not unusual. There, we're not adding anything larger. It's basically just a modification of the curbs that are there today.
Okay. So that means the concrete extension would be separate from the, from the original curb?
They would be part of the same curb.
So how does the snow removal works if like this?
Like it would normally work on a, on the roads today. Just the curves would be tighter and basically those, those curves would be extended adjacent to, to the, to the roadway. They'd be pushed out.
I see.
So I'm happy to share some details with you, outline on that.
We'll definitely need to have further communications later, yeah. But the community and I are still concerned about this because it, it could actually make things more dangerous, especially in the winters. So if I am going to support this presentation, but I would like to make some amendments for the staff report. Is it a good time to go?
So actually, councillor, we will be, the report will be coming up later in the agenda. Right now, we're talking to the presentation.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So my next question is on slide number nine. It mentioned that the slowdown sign programme faces challenges. And now the city recommends a pilot bulletproof road silhouette sign programme. So are there any specific locations already planned for this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No specific locations identified at this point in time. We did want to see council approval first, support for the pilot. And so that'll be something that we'll be working on between now and the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you so much. This is all about, thank you so much.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to the presentation? Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to receive with thanks. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Next, we have another presentation. Sorry, this time, another presentation. And this would be by Chun Chu, our senior planner, regarding the final community improvement plan or for the affordable housing and sustainability, sustainable design. So I understand this could be a 15-minute presentation. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, councillors. I am also joined today by our policy team and our sustainability team, as well as Nick Michael from Ann Barry Lyon Consultants and Graham Stewart from ERA Architects, who are the consultants for this project. This is our agenda for today. The purpose of today's meeting is to present the final recommended Community Improvement Plan, or CIP, for affordable housing and sustainable design. I'll start by providing an overview of the CIP project, and then I'll go over the final recommended CIP and its implementation. And I'll end with recommendations to council. Now, I'll provide a brief overview of the CIP project. As a recap, the CIP is a result of recommendations coming out of three council-approved initiatives. One is the Affordable Housing Strategy, which identified a CIP as a tool for incentivizing affordable housing and rental housing. The other two initiatives are the Community Energy and Emissions Plan and the Sustainability Metrics Programme. Both of these set goals and targets to ensure new buildings are designed to reduce emissions over the long term, beyond the building code requirements. The purpose of the CIP is to incentivize affordable rental and sustainably-designed housing developments. Since the June council public meeting, we received comments on the draft CIP from the province and from the steering committee for this project, as well as from the development sector. Generally, the feedback we received indicated that there is a need for both improved clarity and increased flexibility related to incentive programmes and eligibility criteria. We also heard input related to how applications to the CIP might be evaluated, and comments were raised regarding the administration of the CIP. In addition to the feedback we received on the draft CIP, city staff also undertook significant research to plan for the implementation of the CIP. As such, we consulted with members of the CIP Working Group, York Region, and other jurisdictions who administer CIPs or related high-value capital grants for affordable housing. Staff identified three key factors affecting the success of the CIP programme, including meeting the timelines of the CMHC's Housing Accelerator Fund, or HAF for short. The other factors are addressing risk mitigations as well as planning for administrative capacity. In terms of the HAF timelines, staff have allocated up to 13 million of the 31.1 million in HAF funds to the initial implementation of the CIP in support of accelerating housing supply. The CIP will prioritize projects that can achieve building permit issuance by November 2026. The HAF funds also must be spent by November 2027. The CIP is restricted in its ability to fund applicants beyond November 2027. The CIP is restricted in its ability to fund applicants beyond November 2027 unless an additional funding source beyond the HAF is identified. In terms of risks, other jurisdictions with experience administering housing funding programs noted that high-value housing incentive programs come with inherent risks. Staff have worked to incorporate risk mitigation measures through all steps of the CIP administration process, which will include outsourcing experts to review the economic or financial feasibility of proposals. It also includes an evaluation criteria to prioritize applicants who are partnered with other levels of governments, such as the federal government through CMHC. The evaluation criteria would also prioritize those with experience in the building and operating of purpose-built rental housing and/or affordable housing. The legal agreements would be structured to permit the city to pursue funds owing through the existing property tax arrears collections process. And lastly, the risk mitigation would also include an annual reporting process to ensure affordable units are maintained. With respect to administrative capacity, the city has limited experience and resources. Richmond Hill is not a housing service manager, and it does not have a dedicated housing services division. To address capacity issues, staff have designed a CIP program that leverages existing processes and resources to streamline the delivery of the city's affordable housing priorities. We will also continue to explore opportunities for future partnerships and supports. Now I'll go over the final recommended CIP. The eligibility criteria you see here is the minimum threshold applied to all incentives offered in the CIP. Most of the original criteria shown at the June council public meeting remains the same. The only differences are firstly, we clarified that the project can contain mixed uses, permitting a combination of residential use with commercial or retail and office uses in the proposed development. And secondly, the minimum number of affordable units is five units as opposed to 15% of the total units. This new threshold enables a greater pool of projects to apply for the CIP. And the third change is that the minimum size of a project is 11 residential units in total in order for the city to exercise site plan control. Here is an overview of the four incentive streams of the CIP. It should be noted that the types of incentives and the affordable rent thresholds remain unchanged. There are a couple of changes made to two incentives. Firstly, in the previous draft of the CIP, we had an automatic grant that covered development fees and charges. This grant has now been restructured as the per-affordable-unit grant, and it is capped at $150,000 per affordable unit. The intent and purpose of this grant remains the same, which is to sufficiently cover the costs associated with development fees and charges. But the newly-structured grant will be much easier to administer, and it will also create certainty for the developer because they don't need to sort through what potential amounts would be covered by the grant based on various fees and charges. The next minor change is the relabeling of the capital grant as a competitive capital grant in order to distinguish it from the per-affordable-unit grant. The competitive grant would consist of a large pool of money awarded to the highest-scoring candidate. The last two incentives are the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant and Public Lands, and they both remain unchanged in the final CIP. Previously, the draft CIP was a hybrid model that partly awarded grants based on projects meeting the eligibility criteria and based on a first-come, first-served basis. In the final version of the CIP, this is no longer the case. Instead, all applications will be awarded based on an evaluation criteria as listed on this slide. The criteria range from the level of housing affordability to the achievement of higher sustainable standards, as well as support from other funding programs offered by other levels of government. The criteria also considers if the project is shovel-ready, and it looks at the qualification of the applicants. Applicants will also need to demonstrate development and operational feasibility through pro formas. Because we have limited funding and an external deadline to implement the funds, we may not be able to fund all potential applicants. The evaluation criteria was created to enable the city to choose the best and most appropriate candidates. This list of general criteria provides transparency in the city's decision-making process and allows the city to do its due diligence before giving out a significant amount of funds to developers. More specific information on the evaluation scoring will be set out in the CIP guideline, including other additional evaluation considerations. I'll now go over the implementation of the CIP. In terms of implementation, the CIP incentives will be launched in phases. In early 2025, the per-affordable-unit grant and the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant will be the first incentives open for application intake and evaluation. This phase reflects the need to prioritize projects that are most shovel-ready and which are partnered with other levels of government to minimize risk. Policy planning staff are actively working with development planning staff to identify potential CIP candidates, and we are currently liaising with various local landowners and developers. Approximately $13 million in HAF funding is allocated to the CIP. Based on an estimate of $150,000 per unit through the per-affordable-unit grant, this amounts to about 80 to 90 affordable units in total. If all of the funding is allocated through the per-door affordable-unit grant intake, we will hold off launching the competitive capital grant unless additional CIP funding remains available. The TIC, or Tax Increment Equivalent Grant, would be continued to be offered as a part of the CIP, and future funding sources will be sought out after the HAF funding is depleted. With respect to public lands as an incentive, the city is currently in the process of identifying potential vacant or underutilized lands for affordable housing. If and when these lands become available, they will be issued through a request for proposal process. As we roll out the CIP in early 2025, we will be promoting the CIP to all stakeholders, including Housing York and industry associations in the development sector and nonprofit housing sector. The city is working on a communications plan to reach a wider audience in order to increase the potential for the CIP uptake. And that concludes our presentation. We recommend that the staff report SRPBS.24.103 be received and that the Community Improvement Plan project area through Bylaw 133-24 and the Community Improvement Plan for Affordable Housing and Sustainable Design through Bylaw 134-24 be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will be speaking to the report later in the agenda. However, would like to get a discussion started on the presentation and perhaps receive with thanks, Counselor Silivitz would like to start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chen, so much, and to your staff for this presentation and for all the work that you've done. I will receive this with thanks. I just have one question that I believe I can ask at this stage. On slide 10, you talk about the CIP evaluation criteria. So there's a lot of money involved here, and I don't know if it's you to answer this question or if it's someone else. But who's the final approval authority? Is it council or is it staff and department?
Thank you, Counselor Silivich, for your question. So the applications for the CIP will be launched in early 2025 through an intake window. And so we will have a pool of applicants. And there is going to be a review committee made up of different staff from different departments who will first ensure that the applicants meet the eligibility criteria. And once they do meet that eligibility criteria, they get moved on further to be evaluated through the CIP evaluation criteria, which you see on slide 10. And once one staff has determined that one or a few of these applicants should be, is recommended for awarding of the CIP incentives, we would ask for a senior management approval first, and then we bring it forward to council for final approval.
Excellent, thank you. That last sentence is what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the staff representation. You know, it's obviously, a lot of work had been done before I actually got to this stage. I always like to hear that word CIP, or Community Improvement. Who doesn't stand for Community Improvement Plan? The question is, how much, where, for what purpose, what benefit we're going to gain, right? So on this slide, talking about incentive intake. At the end of the day, you have the best program, how money available through the housing for to be grant. The timeline on slide 12. First intake. Given that we only have a three-year window to spend all the $31 million, if it's still around, after 2025. How, is that a particular, I noticed this also communication mention later on. To what extent that that particular thinking behind that? We are talking about possibly we have not just one-time intake, but subsequent years. I'm just trying to understand the thinking behind it, what's expectation? Because actually, I would like to know what are the total target number of housing units, through you, Mr. Chair, to begin with? And then from that, you can roll down, we talked 100 units, and then whatever. I hope you got my question. Through you, Mr. Chair. What are we shooting for? What's the target? And how you distribute for three years for intake?
Thank you, Counselor Chan, for your question. So through the through our commitment to the Housing Accelerator Fund, we do have a commitment to CMHC for issuing of building permits, a number of building permits, as well as a number of affordable housing units. The CIP is a tool that will help us move towards that target. However, the CIP is not able to fund, you know, all the units that's targeted in the CIP. And according to our calculation, with the per-affordable-unit grant capped at $150,000 per unit, that would amount to about 80 to 90 affordable units. However, I do want to note that those are the affordable units. We're not speaking also to just purpose-built rental housing. Because when an applicant comes in, they may apply for the CIP, and it could be a mixed-income project where there is a percentage, you know, of that development that is affordable units. So while we could achieve 80 to 90 affordable units, there are likely many more units in terms of just purpose-built rental housing units as a part of the development application. And that will help us to increase our supply of rental housing as well.
Thank you for the answer. Yeah, I'm just only focusing on the slides. When you get to the report, start report, then I think I'll raise question then. But thank you very much, because where I'm coming from, we know what we have to target and shoot for and how it distribute over three years, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Davidson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question, and it'll illustrate my lack of math understanding. But on slide 20, on slide eight, where it says rental up to 128%, I'm totally lost on those numbers. I'm not clear on the math there on how, can we see slide eight? Is that possible? If it takes a long time, don't worry about it. But the part that says affordable rent at or below 120% of the average market rent, at or below. I don't understand. We're allowed, I don't understand the 125. Wouldn't it be at or below market rent? I'm confused by the 125.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davidson, for your question. So we have set the criteria for the CIP eligibility to be at or below 125% of the average market rent. And I want to firstly explain that the average market rent is based on a CMHC rental market survey. And that rental market survey is already artificially low in terms of the rent. And the reason for that is because the predominant units that's counted in that survey are based on existing purpose-built rental housing. And they typically are built from the 70s, 80s, and 90s. So they're fairly old, and they are under rent control. A lot of them are under rent control. And so those rents are artificially low. If you compare it to rents that is asking right now, based on new builds, new purpose-built rental housing, they need to conform to the current building code, which have a more stringent requirement in terms of in terms of energy efficiency and materials. And so those costs are actually quite high. And so at 125% of the average market rent based on CMHC's survey, it's actually low. And it will serve households who are considered moderate-income households. So these are folks who are at 60%, 60 percentile of the income distribution in the city.
Thank you. I understand now. And I'm assuming you have to use some benchmark that's generally accepted, so we can't make up our own benchmark that is more realistic to the market. My, I did, the other question I have, when we, if, when we give a grant to someone, they build it, do we have any say in who gets to live there? Because what worries me is that you know the builder, and maybe you're going to get a cheap place. Do we have any say in how these affordable units, once built, will be offered to those who need them? Or is that going to be completely in the hands of the developer?
Thank you, Counselor Davidson, for your question. So this will be all part of the implementation of the CIP. And we are working with our legal department and through our partnership with other jurisdictions such as York Region to help implement the CIP. And so when it comes to ensuring that the right folks are getting the house that's needed, you know, through this program, that will be considered as part of the contribution agreement between the city and the actual developer who is building those homes.
Thank you, your Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you, and it honestly is the first glimmer of hope that we're actually going to get to do this thing, because we've had so much difficult news. So thank you so much. I really look forward to hearing how this goes.
Thank you. Next, I have Counselor Xu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And on the same slide, slide number eight, I have a question. One of the criteria is the number of the affordable units provided. It shows that at least five units must be affordable, affordable with a minimum project size of 11 residential units. So does that mean that no matter how big the project is, only five units in the entire development would be accepted instead of by percentage? Am I correct? Through the chair.
Thank you, Counselor Xu, for your question. So the five units, affordable units, it's the minimum number of units. And because we have this eligibility And because we have this eligibility criteria, and we have an evaluation criteria, we are essentially asking applicants to go above and beyond the very basic requirements, which is five units. And the reason why we had reduced it to five units is because in the original draft of the CIP, we had asked for 15% of affordable units. And we have heard from our stakeholders that this threshold is, is too high. And so it would preclude them from applying to the CIP program. And so that's why we have reduced it to five units in order to open it up, to get a bigger pool of applicants. But essentially, they will be competing against each other, you know, to provide the best product. And, and we will be looking for those projects that have a higher number of affordable units.
Through the chair, if that's the case, that would be a situation that if every project only five units, affordable units, we cannot meet the target. Would this situation would happen?
Thank you, Counselor Xu. We don't think that will happen, because, because the CIP incentives, from what we heard from our stakeholders, it is a very desirable product. It's, it's an incentive that will greatly help the developers reach their feasibility. And so we do see applicants coming in, we think, we anticipate that the applicants will come in with affordable units above, beyond, beyond the basic requirement.
Through the chair, my next question is, another criterion on the same page is the applicant need to be in a good standing with the city. So what's the definition, what's the definition of good standing?
Thank you, Counselor Xu, for that question. So good standing, that's a, a basic requirement of, from what we heard from other jurisdiction when they implement funding. A good standing means that they don't owe the city any taxes or any, anything in arrears, and also that we're not in litigation with them.
So there's not a blacklist, on, on the city's blacklist?
That's right.
Okay, thank you so much. So that's all about my questions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Mayor West.
Actually, I'll wait until the, we deal with the report, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So can you please bring the slide on the page six, just previous page? So my first question regarding to that, is, I think it's Page 8, right? Same page as before?
Yeah, this is the one. My first question regarding to that, still the, the question is, the number of affordable units is at least five. So I see another slide, there mentioned a 15%ish of the minimum, right? I think this one is only one part of the whole scope for a number of affordable units, except minimum 5% of five units must be affordable. Also, you should put 15% threshold at minimum there as for this big project. I saw from different PDFs, so I would suggest put that one in there as well, just in case for the confusion. So my next question regarding to the affordable rental in at or below 125, I think Counselors, Counselor Karen already asked, Karen already asked question. So my understanding is, if the average rental in marketing is $150, just example, $150, that's average renting. And for the threshold was affordable is 100. And if we chart 125, somehow we are in the 125. But compared with the averaging rental in affordable, it might be 100, or 130, or 140, lower than 150 at the marketing. So this time being, the threshold is 130 or 40 as affordable definition, that's the threshold. So even they charge 125, they are still qualified as affordable, but they're very close to the threshold. Is that my understanding correct? So they are still under the threshold of the affordable, the marketing is 150, but the definition of affordable is 140. And now they charge 125, they are still under affordable scoop, right?
Thank you, Counselor Tree, for your question. So maybe I'll just speak to your first point first about the five affordable units. I just want to clarify that previously, in the June version of the CIP, the draft CIP that, that went in front of council for the council public meeting, we had a 15% affordable unit requirement. And that has changed. So right now, to, in the final version of the CIP, it's five units. And that change was brought on through a discussion with our stakeholders. So the development sector had told us that the 15% threshold is too high, they won't be able to apply. So that's why we had reduced it to five units in order to facilitate more applicants, you know, applying. With respect to your second question about the 125% average market rent, I, I want to clarify that the 125% average market rent is an affordable threshold. It's affordable according to York Region's official plan, that's in their definition. So we have taken on that definition. And in addition to that, we measured it, you know, against the household income in the city. And we figured that at 125% of the average market rent, it will be affordable to the moderate income households. So these are the households who are within the 60th percentile of the household income distribution.
Okay, so my, yeah, my understanding is totally different. I thought it's going to be cheaper, but it's still beyond the marketing values, even I have more money upon to them. So I, I, I think the money should be, pay attention to the people who has not affordable, not enough money for it. If you beyond the average marketing, if you have money, you can pay for it, that's your own choice. But I think we are challenging for the rental in and affordability, right? So I do have question regarding to that category, but I leave that one alone. So my concern is, or my focus on the 80% to 100%, that I think is more applicable for the people who looking for reliable and affordable housing. That is my personal suggestions. And my last question regarding to the, as what Counselor City is mentioned, so when we offer $30 million HAF, I'm assuming there might be many applicants looking for the fundings. So I just have a suggestion here. When we select which one or which applicant going to be qualified, first one is committee, definitely this is one crucial. A second one, I want all of those process, and also the results be more transparent. So everyone can see our correct here, because you, based on your time, your scope, we have ABC criteria, you qualify, so we give you the granting. So I hope this one could be more transparent, just in case people seeing, hey, there might be a black box at end of day. So we don't want, we, we're trying to be more transparent for all public. Thank you.
Next on the speaker's list is Counselor Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as long as we are at the eligibility. Just a quick question. So is this CIP only catered to new applicants? Or what about the existing applicants if they wanted to change their already approved plan to qualify for this CIP? Is it possible through you, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Counselor Liu. So the CIP would be open and applicable to applicants who have not yet constructed their building. So whether they have their application at the site plan approval stage, and they haven't, or perhaps they haven't pulled a building permit yet, and they haven't started construction. So they could come and apply, as long as they meet our eligibility criteria, they will be considered.
Thank you. So, but is, is there timeframe allowed for them if they wanted to change the original plan to qualify for this? Do we have enough time for that through you, Mr. Chair?
Certainly, we would be prioritizing applicants who can meet the half timeline. It's because we are committed to the half timeline for pulling birth, building permits by, by November 2026. And also, we're only, we're also tied to the expenditure of the funds by November 2027. And so we will be seeking and prioritizing those applicants who can meet those timelines.
Thank you. So we will also be communicating with the existing developers. Thank you. Just one last quick question. Is the $31 million already in our bank? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, happy to answer that. No, the $31 million gets paid out in four payments. We've received the first payment, and we're currently working on reporting for year one in order to be able to receive the second payment.
Thank you. So are we collecting interest on, on that portion of money that we received through you, Mr. Chair?
I would imagine so. The, the amount that we have in our bank accounts, I would imagine so, yes.
Pressure, Liu.
Through the chair to Counselor Liu. With respect to the interest, we are collecting interest because it's a sum that is in our bank account. However, that interest is not directly allocated back to this one, because we don't allocate interest to this money. So overall, with the $7 million, we are earning interest for it, because it's in our bank account, but that interest is allocated broadly to the reserve funds.
All right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the, the presentation. I wouldn't mind getting just a little bit of clarification as well on the eligibility, because I'm, I'm curious as to whether it will be available sort of to, to everybody on, on an even playing field. Because I understand you have to do the, the criteria, and they have to get past the intake, intake round, and so on and so forth. But it sounds like there is a possibility that there could be some developments that would like to be part of the program, they could meet the eligibility, but because someone else may have come in with a higher component number, more than the 5%, I would think as part of the criteria, we're looking at them ahead of the person that came in at 5%. And so I could see the potential where we may only get the, these builds in certain locations and not evenly across, you know, Richmond Hill where perhaps we need them. I'm not sure exactly how I'm phrasing the question here, but is there a potential that there could be ones that will be challenging our criteria to say, well, I didn't get in there because the bigger players were able to, you know, come up and, and, you know, basically push me off to the side?
Through the chair, I think it's important to point out that the suite of eligibility and evaluation criteria is designed to have checks and balances. So certainly, the amount or volume or yield of units is, is going to be a consideration, given our deadlines under the half program. But also the operation and maintenance, being eligible to sign a legal agreement that will be in place for 25 years, and ensuring that the rent is going to be affordable, or also working with providers that have been doing this for a long time. We are going to be looking at those things in terms of credibility and past projects that they, they have done. And, you know, I'm guessing that, you know, the concern is also to ensure that some of the smaller nonprofit providers are also included. And those are generally the organizations that have that credibility that we're looking for as well. So it, this doesn't mean that, you know, someone with a higher yield will automatically trump them. We are looking at the applications as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much for the question, or for the answer. Those are all my questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That carries unanimously, I believe. I can't see Counselor DePaola. At this point in time, we will be bringing this back. We have a couple of delegations that are on the agenda. First off, we have Tarek Luka, I believe is here in person, and there wish to speak to the Traffic Safety and Operations Strategy Implementation and Monitoring Update. Tarek, you have five minutes to address council. At the four-minute mark, you will hear a bell that lets you know that you have one minute left. Mr. Luka, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. As a longtime resident of Richmond Hill, I care deeply about the future of our community. While I understand the intent behind traffic calming procedures and bike lanes, I firmly believe these policies are currently implemented are misguided and counterproductive. Traffic calming procedures, first, let's address the issue of traffic calming on side streets, such as Springbrook. These measures not only inconveniencing residents of those streets, but are creating ripple effects that negatively impact our main artery roads like Bayview Avenue. From our last meeting, we learned that the council does not even have jurisdiction over Bayview Avenue. I could be wrong. Yet, by restricting side street traffic, bottlenecks are being created on these major roads. Bayview is essential for connecting residents to schools, work, and services. But with these bottlenecks, it's becoming a nightmare for commuters. Instead of focusing on fluidity and improving traffic flow on main streets, these measures are pushing traffic into choke points. The result, frustrated residents, longer commutes, and reduced quality of life. We should be prioritizing strategies that encourage smooth traffic flow, not measures that force drivers into gridlock. People should be able to get to work and school on time with minimal stress, and we should be working towards policies that nourish, not frustrate, our neighborhoods. Bike lanes. Next, I want to discuss bike lanes. While cycling is wonderful activity and has its place, we must consider the practicality of this initiative for Richmond Hill. We are not Amsterdam. Our city is not flat, nor does it have a mild temperature climate year-round. From October to April, our average temperature ranges from 5 degrees to minus 20 degrees. These conditions are hardly conducive of regular cycling. In addition, the average distance to work for Richmond Hill residents is 12.9 kilometers, which translates to about 40-minute bike ride one way for an average cyclist. How many residents realistically do this? From what I have observed, being, you know, having lived in Richmond Hill for over 20 years, not enough to warrant the extensive allocation of space and resources to bike lanes. We already have wide, safe streets, well-maintained boulevards. Instead of spending taxpayer dollars on measures that do not reflect the needs of residents or realities of our community, why not focus on projects that directly improve the daily lives of our residents? Concrete curbs. I had the opportunity to listen to the TSOS presentation earlier. And while I've presented, or I've prepared my speech today, I now know more, and I am greatly upset about how it's going to be designed. And I'll certainly talk to that if I have time. I'm particularly concerned about the proposition of installing concrete curbs on the bike lanes. I thought they would be equivalent to the ones on Bluer, if you've seen those. These barriers not only create challenges for drivers by reducing These barriers not only create challenges for drivers by reducing lane space, but are also significant waste of taxpayers' money. The reality is that these curbs will see little use for much of the year and will be likely create more traffic congestion on already busy roads. It's worth noting that the Premier of Ontario himself has recently ordered removal of similar bike lanes on major streets in the city of Toronto. This decision reflects a growing recognition that such infrastructure is not suitable for urban areas where traffic congestion and spaces limitations are already significant challenges. In Toronto, a city with larger cycling population and more urban density is scaling back these measures. Why are we considering them for Richmond Hill, a suburban community with vastly different needs? I also want to touch on the recent addition of speed cameras on Bayview between Major Mack and Highway four oh seven. While safety is paramount, this stretch of road meant to be measured through fair is now a source of constant congestion. A simple calculation shows that the commute time on this stretch of road would be increased by fifty six percent during rush hour.
You could wrap up.
Yeah, I'm just a minutes or so.
Less than that, a wrap up, just like fifteen seconds.
Yeah. If we want to put speed cameras in front of every school, I think it would be safer to walk. I'm not against safety. I love Richmond Hill. We'll continue to call it my home because of that. I'll continue to fight against these measures, not because I'm against progress or safety, but because I want to see policies that truly work for people who live here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luca.
Thank you.
Hey, next, we and we will be speaking to this item later in the agenda. Next on the delegation, I believe is online. This would be Alex Chestron regarding traffic regulations changes in the city streets. This is pertaining to the speed limits and parking. So I'm looking to see, and there's Alex. We see you on screen. And go ahead. You have five minutes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And thank you, council, for for taking this delegation. My name is Alex Creston. I am a lifelong Richmond Hill resident. I'm raising my wife and I are both born and raised here in town, and we're raising our two boys here on on Sunshine Drive. We're, you know, quite happy with the the city has been responsive and that our councillor has been very responsive and communicative on the prospect of bringing in some traffic calming measures. Our street is one where people seem to come from out of their way to to race on and to drive recklessly on. We've had a lot of problems with with illegal passing, dangerous driving. And we appreciate the the work of the the city department and of council on moving these initiatives forward. There is one one issue, though, that I I do want to raise, and that's on the removal of on-street parking, particularly on Sunshine Drive. It seems to me counter to the effort of slowing down traffic on the street. You know, the for the it it seems almost trivial for the small number of cars that ever actually do park on Sunshine Drive. This, these are only ever residents or their visitors or contractors that may be there for a couple of hours. In in the case of the neighbors that I know and talk to, most people pull their cars out of the driveway so their kids can play hockey or basketball in the driveway. And the parked cars on the street, of which there are only ever a handful, only serve to actually help to slow down traffic and and encourage some of the the often reckless drivers to behave more responsibly. So I'm I'm quite confused as to why this would be part of of these of this plan. And I would like, if if possible, for the city council to to reconsider this. But obviously, open to any explanation as to why this benefits anyone. But it does seem to be a solution in search of a problem. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That exhausts the delegations list for now. We will actually turn to the two items that the delegations brought up first before we turn to the rest of the items on the agenda. And we'll be starting with eleven point six, the traffic safety and operations strategy implementation and monitoring update. Who would like to start us off? Mayor West.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to the delegates for coming out today and and letting us know your thoughts. So this, the traffic operations study in its entirety has been a long time coming. This was a a motion, I think, that I that initiated this study that I brought in. And it seems like a couple of years ago, more than a couple of years ago now. And at the time, what I was concerned about was that we were getting lots of complaints about unsafe driving and and different things that were happening on our roads. And we were really ill-equipped at the time to to take a comprehensive approach to making sure that we're being as safe as we possibly can on our roads, you know, despite some rather egregious behavior that we see sometimes by by certain drivers. And so what I like about this approach, and and I really appreciate the work that staff has done, and it's been a lot of work, is that this is a comprehensive approach as opposed to a one-off approach. And and the one-off approach, when you're dealing with a network of roadways, is not really very useful because it's just Band-Aids here and Band-Aids there, but it's not taking a system-wide approach. And this is a system-wide approach. It's well thought out. It's well studied by our traffic engineering staff. And it's the right tool and the right place to solve the problem that they've identified. So I do appreciate all the work that's done. I am quite supportive of the of the the work that's been done. And I'm actually not surprised, but happy to see that the feedback that we've received that was outlined in that presentation has been very positive. You know, we've seen reductions in speeds. We've seen people, I mean, I've had numerous people coming up to me and telling me that they're happy with the the result of the of the the work that's been done. I I think that, you know, I do also appreciate the fact that, you know, after a year's worth of implementation of this, we are looking at refining wherever possible, learning, making better. You know, and and this is, I'm I'm hoping and I'm expecting that this will happen every year going forward until we know everything we need to know about this. And we're certainly not at that point yet. I I do I do appreciate the the controversy, let's call it, that we've had with not specifically the traffic operations study, but with the additional implementation of bike lanes and then the parking restrictions that come with those bike lanes. And I know that that's caused, I I'll be honest, probably more concern than I expected it would before we started implementing this. But, you know, since we've had a number of people reach out and and talk about the the restrictions on parking and how that impacts their direct community, I I get it. And, you know, I think in in response to the previous delegate, I mean, the reason we have no parking when we implement a bike lane is to make the bike lane more effective and safe for cyclists. I mean, that's the the short answer in my mind. But I get that, you know, perhaps there needs to be a a look at those types of things on a site-by-site basis to see if we can refine our approach to best use the space. But also, I think it's really important when we have to make decisions that we're erring on the side of safety, separating bicyclists and cars is most definitely going to be a safer approach than having them in traffic wherever, you know, we can separate them. So I I do appreciate that. And I heard in the presentation that, you know, we are going to be taking a look at at some of those issues, and I I appreciate that. And I appreciate it being looked at by our, you know, again, our traffic professionals as opposed to us making one-off decisions. So I appreciate the the work that's being done there. The final thing I'll say is I really do appreciate the creative approach that was taken to the component of this study that had to do with lawn signs. I actually think there may be some value to putting lawn signs to slow down traffic and so on. But I I really had a lot of concerns about that. And frankly, I don't think it's going to be overly effective compared to the stuff that we've now been implementing and seeing is actually really effective. So I think, you know, staff knew enough to to pause on that part of the initiative until we were sure that we were making the right decision. And out of that now, we're starting to see a movement towards putting, you know, banner signs up on on poles, which I actually think is actually a creative and probably better solution to having, you know, lawn signs all over the place and them blowing off their their sign racks and into, you know, the garbage and all that kind of stuff. So I I think that we're we're moving in the right direction there. I I thank staff for the work they've done. And I'm frankly very happy to see us taking a more proactive approach on traffic safety. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Oh, and I'm happy to move the motion.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next is councillor Shu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the delegates spoke and expressed your concern. I still believe the TSOS is a very good initiative to enhance the safety to all commuters and nearby residents. And I don't think anyone wants to see accidents happening right outside your house, right? So, but on the other hand, truly, one sport in my ward, Springbrook community, has been frustrating me and the neighbors all year. Because on one hand, I was told that implementation are based on evidence. But on the other hand, some neighbors don't think it's an issue. Speeding is not an issue in this in the area, and neighbors told me that they don't need that. As a liaison between the city and the community, I'm a bit confused since I'm not living there. So to make me better understand the rationale behind these measures, I asked the city if they could provide some more information, some more basic information, such as how many speeding report, how many residents haven't due due to speeding? How many cyclists use the rail on average each year to justify the bike lanes and boulevards? And I asked all these questions again and again. But unfortunately, I've not received anything yet to prove and support the implementation of this bike lane and also the boulevards. And I believe all this data are easy to understand. It's not a technical terms. It's easy to understand. And I could share all this information with the neighbors and help show why the coming measures are needed. I need that badly, but I've never received this information for the whole year. So I totally understand how frustrated the neighbor is. Me too. Okay. So my first question is through the chair. My fundamental question is, why is Springbrook community has been chosen as one of the TSOS this year? This is a basic question. Can the city repeat it once again?
So through the chair. So Springbrook was selected as one of the eighteen priority locations for a number of reasons. And that was a combination of historical inquiries that we'd received and complaints we received on the street about speeding and some of the historical data collection that we had in our our current database at the time in terms of traffic volumes and and speeds on that street. So based on that and and some of the proximity to other sensitive uses downstream, it was it was deemed to be one of the priority locations in your ward.
Okay. And now the city will be making some modifications to coming measures, to to the coming measures in this in this Springbrook community, and I'm glad to see that, honestly. And I fully understand that no measures can place the whole world and place every single neighbors. I understand. And I hope the neighbors also recognize the measures and the modifications are in the best interest, not only not only for the nearby residents, but also the all commuters using the rail. Because the rail is a city-owned property. It's not your backyard. And what the city is doing is for the best interest of the whole community or the entire area, but not only the household, just just on the Springbrook. I hope you understand that. So and I know, I know, all this modification, not everybody will please for that. But upon the request of the community, I respect your comment and opinion of all this modification. So I would like to amend, to refer the report back to the staff to amend and add the condition to exclude Springbrook community to reevaluate all these measures only in this area. Can I make this amendment to this staff report to exclude Springbrook community, all of this?
Thank you. I'm gonna have to turn to the clerk for assistance here.
Thank you. Through the chair. So the motion on the floor is a staff recommendation that's forward-looking, looking at the twenty twenty five proposals. I believe the Springbrook modifications or implementation was twenty twenty four, so it's backwards-looking. To
But, excuse me, but all this modification will be implemented in twenty twenty five? Is that right?
Allow me one second to take a look.
So I just want to exclude all the modifications and or only the the exploration of the permanent concrete extension, not going for that way in the Springbrook community only. Can I can I go for this way? Through the chair.
Director, are you able to answer in regards to this staff report and Springbrook specifically?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So correct, the only thing we're seeking approval for through this report is the the locations for the eighteen locations for twenty twenty five. Now, withstanding that in my presentation in the report, we did indicate that we will be also reviewing the what we had implemented at Springbrook. And again, this was our first crack at some of these initiatives. So we had a public education session in the fall with the councillor and the residents. We heard what they had to say. We received that information. And we'll be working on making some modifications to to address some of those those comments. And those will be implemented when we return in the spring in twenty twenty five. So we'll be making those adjustments in twenty twenty five. And I've heard loud and clear that curb extensions should not be part of that. So that's something we will duly note as staff, and and we'll take that into consideration, any sort of modifications that we do, if that helps.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, councillor. Back to you.
If I make more specifically for just not going for the permanent concrete extension with a further exploration. Does it make sense? Does it make sense to make an amendment for the staff report and refer it back to staff? Just only this point, just only this this exploration of the permanent concrete extension business? This is a huge pushback by the residents for this for this plan.
So not, you're gonna have to provide some clarification on the amendment that you're actually looking for to what was being asked here. So right now, it's it's being asked that the council approve the eighteen traffic calming locations for traffic calming in twenty twenty five as outlined in attachment two. And the council approve a boulevard slowdown sign pilot program. So are you looking to add a clause or I'm not sure what we're what you're looking to amend?
I'm not sure which way is better, but I just want to only exclude the part of the the explanation, the possible explanation of the permanent concrete extension in the Springbrook area. That's my request by this on behalf of the residents.
Hey, Commissioner Masaro.
Through the chair, councillor Shu, very much appreciate all the the feedback. For clarity, in twenty twenty four, the locations were approved by council. So what staff has said is that we have gone back to look at the efficacy of how well the implementation of this traffic calming measures have worked. And we're willing to go back, modify where necessary. And no different that we are reviewing that with council today. In addition to asking permission for the new locations in twenty twenty five, it will be part of our process through traffic safety to always come back and update council on what we're doing, how well we're doing it, and the opportunities for improvement in that. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate that we get so specific into approving the very specific details as to how we're going to implement some of those measures. So to go so far as to say we will not implement So to go so far as to say we will not implement concrete curb bump outs in a very specific location, I think really gets into the technical engineering application of how we are undertaking road safety across the city. I feel it's best left to staff to explore those and allow staff and the administration to do its part and manage the right of way. And then we can report back and explore different opportunities on how we can find that balance between road safety, safety for the community, and the will of council and the community as well. Hope that helps.
Okay, through the chair, can I put it this way? Do you have any timeline to explore the feasibility of the permanent concrete curb extension? Does the city have any timeline to explore this?
So through you, Mr. Chair. There's no timeline in terms of exploring concrete, the use of concrete curbs. Ultimately, we'd look at the feasibility where we had done bump outs with bollards. If this will help, I can certainly tell you for Springbrook, we were not anticipating to put in any concrete bump outs as part of the treatment. What we were actually really looking to do, based on the feedback, was to pull back the number of bollards we're using as edline treatments and potentially consider putting speed humps because that is what we heard through the public education sessions. So those are the two modifications, like putting the gateways instead of the bollards that are down the road and then adding some speed humps rather than doing that and removing the bollards that were on the curbs. So we weren't intending to replace them with anything.
Okay.
And if that sort of helps sort of close out this conversation, hopefully.
Understood now. So I will withdraw my plan. How to say that?
Amendment motion.
Amendment motion, yes. So my last to comment is for the PIC. Actually, what's the purpose of the PIC? Because in the PIC, I attend twice, okay? And in the PIC, oh, so is there a second round for this? Can I leave it for the second round? Mr. Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I will leave it in the second round.
Okay. And next on the speaker's list is Counselor Davidson.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I do want to start with some of the comments about these traffic calming measures cause congestion. I'm assuming that causes congestion and backup because people are going the speed limit. And people that are upset that it takes longer to get to work because of the speed cameras on the regional roads like Major McKenzie is because they're going the speed limit now. So it takes longer to get to work. So these what I hear is these speed calming measures are working. And if you are speeding through these neighborhoods, you know, being late for work isn't an argument to speed. The point is that we have to slow traffic down. And if that causes a backup because people are going the speed limit, that's an unfortunate outcome for the person who who's in that traffic, I guess. So I, there's no argument for saying, well, it's inconvenient to not be able to speed. I also want to say about the discussion we just had about traffic calming. I have received so much pushback. And frankly, I can't think of a traffic calming measure that has been implemented in Ward 1 that didn't end up in me receiving some angry letters from the residents where it's closest to. I heard nothing from the hundreds and thousands of residents who live in Ward 1, who don't live at that exact location. So looking at the bigger picture, these traffic calming measures to me have been very well received by residents. And since it is our job to take care of everybody, big picture, I fully support everything in this report. I do want to say about parking, the bike lanes. For 2025, and for example, Black Forest, that street has no public transit. So if you, people have to drive. So if you can't park anywhere near your house, I think it does cause undue stress and a burden to those neighbors. So I'll work offline with you to talk about if we could make that no parking seasonal and not have bike lane, no parking when it's winter time or so we can take that one offline. I do want to ask if the things like the Boulevard signs are in the 2025 budget ask. These aren't extras, right? This is all comes underneath what's already been put forth for 2025 budget. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, they would be, they would be out of the approved budget for 2025.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. And the other thing I still don't quite understand is the curb extension. I'm assuming those bollards were to, when you were talking about tightening the turn, I don't know what you're talking about, but what I know is there's been many a time I've been standing on a corner waiting to walk and someone cuts the curb so close I actually jump back. If that's what we're trying to prevent, then I wholeheartedly support that because it'll take one time when your tire hits that curb that you'll figure out you have to go wider. I think it's overkill to say we shouldn't have any of this. When I've seen people cut curves so close that parents grab their kid back. So if that's what we're talking about, we can also take this offline, but I do look forward to a simplified visual presentation of what an extended curb is meant to do. My last point is I encourage residents to go to Newmarket and drive around some of their communities where there is traffic calming after traffic calming after traffic calming. And you go slow in those neighborhoods and you often avoid them altogether, which is great. Don't cut through my neighborhood speeding because it's going to take you longer than going on a major artery. So I feel like this program is extremely successful. I really appreciate how open we've already changed some things in Ward 1 because it's not written in stone or concrete. I find staff very flexible. So if there's a specific issue, I encourage all of us to talk to you offline and support these initiatives for the bigger picture. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Chereski, did you wish to speak to the curb extension?
Through, Mr. Chair.
You provide us between now and next week with a visual, sort of a better understanding of what curb extension means and what it aims to fix.
Certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Chair. Through you, Ms. Chair, to our director from traffic team. So, you know, we worked hardly, especially our talk with Ward 4. Through this past two years, we visited onsite for many, many locations. And in my ward, we have 10 elementary schools and also two high schools. So except one of the high school, I did not got complaint. So all the school areas got complaint about traffic. So so far, like last year from to this year, 2024, we implemented the three locations. And next year, we're gonna explain for another three locations, but we still have a lot of school areas and parents and residents are looking for to enhance the traffic commings by November 8th, which is around the one week ago. In my community, one of the seniors crossed the street, paid by a school bus and died in hospital. So it's November 8th. So I would say traffic calming is so important. Luckily, we haven't had big issues near the school area yet, but you know, I appreciate all the efforts. So from my experience with the residents and the feedback from them, it's very positive. Almost everybody are looking for traffic commings inside our community. So I'm going to support these motions and also carry on. And we are all expecting for the automatic traffic control cameras in the future as well. So very good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Silivitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, my thanks to staff. I agree with what Counselor Davidson was saying, that staff have been incredibly cooperative and open to have any discussions that are necessary. And we've had two very good public information sessions for Ward 5. And they went well, even though, you know, sometimes it can get a bit jumpy. But they went well. And I believe that by the end of it, everybody understood the reasons why, why certain implementations were being made. So I just want to, I want to comment that I am pleased to hear that the Springbrook implementations are going to be reevaluated and that some bollards may be removed. I think that's a very, very good idea. I understand the concerns about about extended concrete curbs, but I also agree with Counselor Davidson that they are necessary sometimes to protect pedestrians. I, in Ward 5, from our residents, I have not had one complaint. In fact, I keep on hearing when's my street getting done? So there's no question this is working. And I'm very, very thankful to our staff and to the engineering and roads department who are undertaking all of these implementations because they, without any question, they make the roads safer and they make the sidewalks safer. They make biking safer. They make walking safer. There's absolutely no question about that. So I just wanted to go back to something that Mr. Luca said in his presentation in his delegation. Through you, Mr. Chair, to our director. Mr. Luca made a reference to, and I don't want to misquote him, about jurisdiction, that we may not even have jurisdiction to do the things we are doing. I believe that's what Mr. Luca was implying. Could, through you, Mr. Chair, to the director. Could you, Director Chereski, please explain to us exactly how we do have jurisdiction over these municipal and local roads?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think what Mr. Luca was referring to was Bayview Avenue. And this did come up in our traffic or public education session. I think we had identified that Bayview Avenue was not our jurisdiction.
Right.
And we are here to basically ensure that our municipal local streets, our local municipal streets are operating safely and are functioning and accommodating the various users that should be using those streets.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And indeed, we don't have jurisdiction over the York Regional Road, the main arteries. We only have jurisdiction over our local and collector roads. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I hope that furthers the understanding. And I also just want to add to what Counselor Davidson was saying. I with all respect to Mr. Luca's concerns, I don't believe that traffic calming measures should be an excuse that someone makes that they are late for work. I just, I don't, I don't see, I don't see where that is in any way a reality because it's not. If they're late for work, it's because they haven't left early enough. And it's not the traffic calming measures. The traffic calming measures are allowing our streets to be more safe. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Next on the speaker's list, Regional Local Counselor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Director and your team. And it's not, I guess, to the overall is as smooth as some of us, including staff that have anticipated. If you, but if you look at wholesomely CTY, I would concur particularly based on what the presentation as well as the very clear on page four. General speaking, you know, a number of indicators, most people would talk about traffic, speeding in terms of travel speeds. And it's actually coming lower and as well as having the speed cushions, that also helps some of other measures. But I do have question later on on the traffic volumes. They give an overall reduction. And my question later on, maybe I may as well waste it now. Where's that 10% of traffic volume we thought we are reducing went and gone? Unless we have statistics will also show overall, with or without these measures, the traffic volume is generally coming down. And I will ask a specific question later on. But that's, I'm just with a question. If you have answered now, Director, I'm happy to hear about it. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I understand the question correctly, based on the traffic volume reductions we observed on our streets, you're asking where that traffic has gone. So at this stage, we haven't really tracked where that traffic has gone. But effectively, on many of the streets, we anticipate that the traffic is staying on our T O roads. So so there's two real primary functions to what we've been doing with these traffic calming measures. One is to reduce speeds for the vehicles that are on the street. And it's to deter things like commuter traffic cutting through our neighborhoods because these roads were not designed for commuter traffic or cut through traffic. They're designed to serve the local community. And so, so we suspect in a lot of cases, those cars are now remaining on the roads because it is a little bit more inconvenient to travel when you have speed cushions or bollards on these streets.
Thank you for the answer.
Answer your question.
Yeah, thank you for the answer. So perhaps it kind of supports what I think what is happening is that those indicators, whether it is the lowering of speed or the reduction in traffic volume are based on collection data in the 2024 18 locations. Am I correct on that? Through Mr. Chair, not overall CTY, but on the 18 locations.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, yeah, that data, those reductions were specific to the the traffic calming locations that were installed last year.
Okay, so I think that context should be bringing to perspective. If that's the case, then I would drill down to specifics. And specifically, Ward 6 Counselor Michael Shu talking about, and he's seeking to have Springbrook community to recover. Actually, he tried that at the end of last year as well. And I think the report, staff report on page five, and I hope, as the article is talking about, Gary of those fixed bullets on the biking lanes. Because I was at the same meeting that Counselor Shu was there. I had been a representative for 16 years before I moved to this chair. I hear very loud and clearly, and you do, there was 100% opposition. Well, of course, it's only among those people who show up. But I have never seen my 16 years as a local councillor. The residents were so fed up. Maybe, Mr. Luca, you were there, but certainly I actually shared some of the things Commissioner Masaro was talking about. The city was actually already had, you know, education session and so on and so on. And I have to say, it's not very proper or well received. But I just want to demonstrate, like the staff report is saying, the staff actually look at statistics, look at the traffic, all kinds of things collected. You use the term director, historical data. I think it's fair, reasonable for not just the local councillor, but the residents to see what are the data? Because that's the question keep popping up. If they're supportive, nobody is going to argue against that really scientific data. And so is that a different decision? You're not just because Springbrook happened to be the street to be picked on. And relating to the question I was saying earlier. So the measure, the traffic volume is primarily less presumably on Springbrook and other 17 locations, correct? Through Mr. Chair.
Through the chair. Yes, that's true.
Okay. And then maybe it's a challenge. I'm quite familiar with the area. Then perhaps traffic might have gone up to Fern Avenue or M Avenue for those people familiar with the area and get off to Bayview or 16 through Fern or Path Lane or Duncan. So it's really diverting from one area, one street to other street. It might happen to other 17 locations as well. So I'll be very careful when I look at that, interpreting that traffic volume lower because it's just basically moving from one road to another. So that's something to think about. And I think I don't have as much time to go back. I will go the second round. But I think that the staff were there at that meeting. And I like what is proposing on get rid of those bullets that nobody's liked. And also looking at the other ways that can provide reasonably safe lanes for people who do use bicycles. And Mr. Luca found out that, you know, it's only so many months you can use. And I'm thankful for that. And for the second delegate on Sunshine, I'm very familiar with that as well. In fact, I think that some flexible flexibility in terms of parking may be looked at. But I'm glad that both Absurdly Lane and also Sunshine in that area has been on the list of 2025. Last but not least, I'm really glad to see the pole mounted radar board first installed, if I remember correctly, on ITAP row in what, six years ago, it's now going to expand by reward. And those are good measures collectively along with the region. And not just a region, the region have adopted Division Zero that, and that's why you're seeing more and more of those reduction in really serious accidents. I think keeping in mind, that's the goal. The objective is to lower, lower the The objective is to lower, lower the particular serious traffic accidents. So on that note, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would also like to thank staff for, you know, there's been lots of effort and work put into this. I still remember the late Mayor Barrows always said, you know, the city has no jurisdiction in controlling people's driving behavior. And it's unfortunate that, you know, there are obviously lots of crazy drivers out there right now. And these are the tools that we have to implement to keep the community safe. And we do it with all good intention. Well, not all the plans are perfect, so I think I agree that maybe we need some minor tweaks here and there. But I think generally, this is very, very good plan, and I thank staff for it. I have a few questions. So 17 of 18 locations have been installed. Where is lucky 18?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The lucky 18th location was and unfortunately, because of the developer activity on that street, we were waiting for top surface asphalt to be installed before putting in the measures. Otherwise, we'd be looking at removing and then replacing them. So that's why it's been deferred until early 2025.
Thank you.
We'll get it in as soon as possible.
So in the report, I like, you know, the scientific numbers of it. And it seems to me that, correct me if I'm wrong, speed cushion is most effective compared to bollards and lane narrowing. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, speed, I outlined it in my presentation as well. But yes, we're finding that speed cushions are obviously the most effective in combination. And so it's not just speed cushions alone, but speed cushions in combination with some of the treatments are the most effective. And that's why, one of the reasons that we're actually reconsidering some of our treatments, even with the speed cushions, we're finding speed cushions in combination with baller gateways tend to not allow for people to avoid the speed cushions and those gaps in the speed cushions. And they tend to be most effective as a treatment. And they minimize the amount of bollards on the street as well.
Thank you. So in the report, there's another suggestion that, you know, certain areas reducing the speed from like 50 to 40. How effective is its speed reduction? Just curious. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's an interesting discussion around lowering speed limits in neighborhoods. You'll generally get compliance. Most people generally want to comply, right, with speed limits. But it really comes down to the way the street was designed. If the street has been designed and it's got wide pavement and it's easily navigatable, it tends to increase the speeds. So we call that design speed in engineering versus posted speed. So if the design speed is a lot higher and you lower the posted speed artificially, you're probably going to end up with not a lot of compliance, to be very honest with you. So speed limit reductions in combination with traffic safety measures are the most effective way to actually bring speeds down and reduce speeds in neighborhoods.
Thank you. So it seems like the trend is every year we add three locations. Is it, of course, it's about, you know, budget. So how possible that, you know, we can increase that? Not just three per ward per year? Because like other councillors, I receive a lot of requests in certain area in my ward to have that traffic safety measurement. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we originally kept it at 18 locations, three per ward, one to be fair to each ward, and also just to get a sense as to how effective each of these measures in our toolbox are. And again, so this is part of the reason we've had two public consultation, two public education sessions this year to get some of that feedback. And so based on the screening, we went with 18 for next year. I think moving forward after that, we are thinking of reconsidering this and really looking at our top priority within a funding envelope and seeing how many we can accommodate. Because the cost of these, depending on what you're implementing, can vary. Depending on how long the section is, depending on how many treatments, the types of treatments. So we would like to sort of maximize our envelope every year. And so I think there would be an opportunity in the future to consider more than 18.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I like to see that. Thank you very much. Okay, not much left. So I really like the silhouette slowdown sign on the pole. So I like to see that implemented as soon as possible. And just a comment from my residents. Many of residents said to me, they think the speed cushion is a little bit too high. I know we already lowered it compared to those before. But is it possible to further lower it a bit? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can certainly take that comment back and have a look at it. I think we decided to use the speed cushion treatment because it tends to be the most gentle versus a speed hump or a speed bump. But we can certainly take that comment back, and I'm happy to have that conversation with you offline as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And just another comment, you know, in Iceland. I don't know how effective now is the radar speed board, because I think, you know, people know there is a speed board there and try to ignore it, even though they're driving like 70 on a 50 zones. So in Iceland, just a comment that, just to share with everybody, instead of showing the speed, you know, if you're within the speed limit, they show you a happy face. If you are speeding, they show you an angry face. So just, yeah, just a little bit suggestion. So one last question is, I think I'm too not a big fan of bike lanes, as you may know now. And I think my main concern about this is the parking restrictions. I really would like staff to really look at it. So I don't quite understand on page six, so it's future partially constructed facilities will function as urban shoulders and parking will be permitted until such time that the cycling facility has been completed. In full extent, what does that actually mean? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what we found is that in order to gain some efficiencies through the traffic calming program, we actually pre-installed portions of spine cycling networks and then dedicate them as cycling facilities. But what we heard through our public education sessions from the residents is, well, you're building these cycling lanes to nowhere. So I think moving forward, any cycling lane that we advance is part of a traffic calming or in conjunction with a traffic calming initiative. If it's only a partial lane, we will basically leave it as an urban shoulder until the program catches up on the active transportation side and the entire facility is put in place and dedicated as an active cycling facility. At which point in time, then all our protocols of time would kick in for it.
Okay, sounds good to me. So I'll discuss with you offline because I think certain role on my ward, you know, they wanted to see that happen instead of parking restrictions. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else on the first round, so I would like to add a few comments myself. I do want to say that, as you mentioned in your talk, that you've been very responsive to changes when things have come up. As an example, when bollards were, say, too close to intersections, moving them back, that type of thing. I know on Pugsley Avenue, that was one of the things. And I think it was probably less than 48 hours that was dealt with. I was very impressed. I appreciate that. One question, and I liked in your presentation where you're saying about the speed reduction, that it went, you know, anywhere between 2 and 22%. And I was just wondering, in that data, did we have any indication as to how that was to the posted speed limit? Are we finding now that the average speed is anywhere now close to that speed limit? Above, below, whatever, that type of thing?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, so what we're actually finding is, I think what you're asking is how close are we to achieving compliance with the speed limit? So all 17 locations, the general compliance overall has gone up. So we're actually seeing more vehicles that are complying or within the target speed limit, notwithstanding how big the reduction is. So to your point, I mean, reduction, you could still get, you know, a 22% reduction, still be exceeding the speed limit, right? But we are generally seeing much better compliance at all 17 locations as well as those speed reductions.
Yeah, much appreciated. And, yeah, when I saw on your slide about the volume reduction, six, anywhere between 6 and 17%, and I immediately took that as we're talking about the cut through traffic that, you know, people were doing. So I think that's great if we're going to stop people from coming through and, you know, you know, because a lot of kids, they're out and they should be out there playing, you know, but on the streets and are just traveling around in their neighborhood. I think it's great that the cut through traffic is cut down. I know that councillor Davidson had talked about how the types of complaints that you get are typically from the residents that live right where those initiatives were put in place. And it's interesting because in my ward, it's the exact opposite. You know, the ones that are living right there are saying, for an example, like Neil Drive, they're saying, can you extend those initiatives all the way to Elgin Hills Road instead of stopping where you did? I got the same thing on Pugsley. They're saying, why did you stop at Roseview? Why didn't you take it all the way to Major Mack? So different culture, maybe it's because, you know, we are a bit closer to public transit where I am in Ward Two versus Ward One. And so I can appreciate people are trying to get in and out of the Ward One community. And, you know, maybe there's, you know, it's a whole different perspective there. So but this leads me to about the bike lanes. And I know that the delegate had mentioned that on average, it's somewhere in the 12-kilometer range for people to get to work. But the reality is, we're only talking between 1 and 2 kilometers to get to public transit. And I think that's where bike lanes are the most effective. So those are my comments. I know we have a request for second round. So moving to councillor Shu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I move forward, I would like to share my word regarding the TSOS for next year. Before the PIC in the fall, I hand out 500 notice to remind nearby neighbors to attend Miss College, Observatory Lane, and also Sunshine Drive. Unfortunately, field and 10 people show up, okay, from that area, field and 10 people show up. Okay, no problem. After the PIC, I drop off another 500 notice to let them know that the proposed measure, along with a survey, what's the opinion for the proposed measure? So for that end up, I'm just receiving 48 surveys back, less than 10%. I believe that is not a good turnout, but we have to respect the respondents because they give back their opinions, okay? And I assume, and I assume the rest of them stay neutral, okay? And according to the result, over 80% of the respondents prefer speed bump and stop sign at intersections rather than gateway bullets and urban shoulders, especially at Sunshine Drive and Observatory Lane. And I shared this result to the traffic team and the city. But unfortunately, the city is still moving forward with the original proposal. So my question is, what's the purpose of the PIC if the neighbors' feedback is not being considered? There's over 80% opposed to proposed measures for the coming years. But the city is still moving forward for that. So I'd like to share this.
So just to clarify, all councillors approving right now is the 18 locations for 2025. Actually, it was based on some of those PICs where we got feedback that we actually wanted to hear what the residents had to say when we presented the initial designs, and so we could take that feedback back, refine the designs, and then actually, those designs, those finalized designs, as indicated in my presentation, will be working on for the remainder of this year. And we'll be rolling those out to, back to the public through formal notices to anybody who's affected, so they could see the final resides based on the feedback that we received through either our surveys, the public education sessions, and in your case, through the surveys that you also conducted on top of that as well.
But the point is, why the city don't make any modification before the first implementation of the proposed measure? There's a difference. Before the first implementation of your proposed measure, I've done the survey already, and most of people don't like it. So if the city is still going for your proposal, that will make the neighbors so angry about this because they consider the city doesn't take any consideration of their opinion before the first implementation.
Through the chair to councillor Shu. Thank you for your question and appreciate the feedback. And we are grateful that you've undertaken your own survey. However, in order for the city to best determine what measures will work in any of the particular locations, it's best that staff, you know, conduct the surveys, ask the right questions, so there's one conduit of receiving information and feedback. So we were not part of determining what the questions are that you asked. So now we have a different dataset. So we'll absolutely take that information back. But it's best suited that staff generally coordinate the surveys and the information, the feedback through the public information centers. And that is very specifically the purpose of undertaking those PICs. And in response to the low feedback, it's important that we have these PICs and we recognize that sometimes the attendance has been low. However, you have also criticized us in the past that had we not undertaken or we had not undertaken sufficient public consultation and communicated enough with the community. So yes, we will continue to communicate with the community, whether it's PICs, social media, our website, and the report also speaks to the variety of different ways that we have done that. So I hope that this helps clarify that the 25 locations are being put forward for approval. And then the team will go away and look at some of those designs and how we can implement it and continue to work with council, each of the ward councillors, for the best solution in each of those locations, taking into consideration naturally the feedback. So the door is not closed. The team is working with our consultants to figure out what those designs will look like and take back your feedback, the community's feedback.
I see. Okay, talking about the PIC, I have two suggestions during the presentation in the PIC in the future. May the city consider to provide more evidence, like how many accidents in that area, how many speeding report or speeding ticket by the ROP? Would ask them for more data to support the implementation of the proposed measure. I think it would be better to let the public know why the city put that measures in the area to support your implementation. I think it's much better just tell the people, oh, your area is designated for the next year TSOS, but there's no evidence shown to the residents. Because we have to show them the evidence, because the city is based on the evidence base. I believe this. But we have to show them the evidence rather than just talk. So this is my first suggestion in the future PIC, to show them more evidence. It would be much better. My next recommendation is, can the traffic team provide more 3D graphics? Like the planning department do to present the development, like a little bit more 3D? It makes the graphic looks more, actually, look like in the future to let the public to have a better understanding what will be actually look like for the coming measures. That's my second comment. And my last comment is, I sent a dashboard to the traffic team last year. There are so many, many different areas asking for common measures, but definitely not Springbrook. So I suggest the traffic team, I can share it to the traffic team again, So I suggest the traffic team, I can share it to the traffic team again, put more effort for the people need our services rather than spend too much resources and manpower and time for those area not appreciate your work. This is my last comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the speakers list, regional local councillor Chan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Actually, before I go on to raise this point, and I think it been touched on while we are now talking item eleven point six, may I presume, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kirk could help? Because I noted that item eleven point seven, way into speeding, has been raised in my colleagues' earlier comments. Is that something we finish should be dealing with, eleven point six? Then specifically, one of us would also move for the recommendation eleven point seven? I just want to be clear on the form of procedural matters. Through Mr. Chair.
Councillor, sorry, Commissioner Mizaro?
Through the chair. So there are actually two very different reports. While there is connections between the issues, I actually, I think they're separated out. And once we're done with this item, then we can deal with the the very, because they're very technical, specific changes to areas, right? So as opposed to the forward thinking of this.
Thank you for that. That's what I thought, but 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 in in a sense, they're related, eleven point six or eleven point seven. So that's why I have a bit of challenge. I want to bring up issue about speeding, but maybe I will reserve it until we talk about eleven point seven, then we can deal with it there. But certainly speeding, particularly recommending later on to change a whole city's street from fifty to forty. So I'm not going to preempt the discussion later on. So I would just say, repeating what I said earlier, I appreciate the challenges I've started working on and individual local areas because I attended most of those public education sessions, both in the winter as well as the most recent one. Yeah, so it's something we can continue to strive to continue dialogue. But thank you, staff. But I I guess I would just keep getting back to the point, I think the speaker before me said it, to the extent that some localized statistics data can be shared, it would certainly enhance the understanding of the people on the street that have been affected, then it helped to, not just to diffuse the the questions and opposition, but understand now actually it's good for the community. Look at those statistics and how much difference. And there's certain things that we, I saw, and the staff are, I mean, the pollists and staff are taking note and doing something about it. And I'm 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 saying that I know councillor Shu and myself would be more than happy to help staff to remove those problems on Springbrook, right? Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the speakers list, Mayor West.
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate a couple of things just quickly. And this has been said, but I think there's a couple of comments that I've heard here today on council, like, roads are a shared resource. They're they're not owned by anybody. And if we start going down the road, excuse the pun, where we're not, we're going to be only doing the things that are acceptable to the people that live on a particular road, we we won't be able to create a network of roads that are safe. And that's the goal here. And now, having said that, like, I, you know, I said in my opening comment that staff is taking a very proactive approach to listen to feedback now that a year has gone by that we've implemented the first round of these these measures and, you know, to try to massage, make it better, but still keep the measures that we've taken effective. And that's the key. I mean, like, you can't, you can't really be dedicated to having a safe road network if you're not able to say, okay, we need to be looking at the entirety of the road network to make it safe. And and I think that's the key. I think, like, you know, councillor Chan, you know, helping staff take out the bollards isn't really actually that helpful if, in fact, those types of measures are the things that are necessary on the street. And and I think that's what we need to get our head around here, is that while we always listen to what people have to say and there's there, if if they're not happy with the measures that are being put in place, there probably are ways to make those measures better while keeping them effective. But at the end of the day, it's our job as council to be able to help people who will come to us, and I totally understand this, with concerns about their specific location. And it's our job to kind of explain to them that, you know, traffic safety is really important. I mean, if somebody is going too fast, loses control of the car, and somebody, like another road user, like a cyclist or a pedestrian gets hurt, that's quite problematic. And so these are the kinds of things that we want to avoid. One of the things I just wanted to also, just if you have the data, somebody going five kilometers an hour over the speed limit is probably almost never going to be a problem. It's the people who are going much faster than they should be going to maintain safe control of their vehicle. One of the things that I hear, if you drill down to listen to what people have to say about road safety, is that it's the people that are going way too fast. So when you've given us the data, it's an average, right? So an average of ten kilometers below. Do we have any data on how much have we been able to reduce the outrageously fast speeds?
Through Mr. Chair. So we do have that data. I don't have it here in front of me, obviously, but we can certainly pull that together. So we typically deal in eighty-fifth percentile speeds.
Right.
So what, the eighty-five percent of motorists, and that's a standard across the industry. We also have staff have pulled together the ninety-fifth percentile speeds and sort of the top speeds as well. And then those are, those can be sort of articulated, the number of motorists that are traveling at those speeds as well. So if that's something that council wishes to see, I can certainly provide that in an email back to council, to all of you.
If if the if the data is handy, that's fine. But I think the point is, like, the average reduction in speed is definitely an indicator that we're heading in the right direction. But if there is a way to also explain why it's important and 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 if we have been able to achieve the reduction in the quite high speeds, that's actually the part that concerns me the most. When somebody is going seventy-five, eighty kilometers down the road in a fifty, that's a problem. Because if somebody is, if a pedestrian is walking along, listening to headphones, not really paying attention, looking at their phone, whatever, and they make a mistake, but the driver at the same time is also making a mistake by going way too fast, that's a bad ending, right? And those are the kinds of things that we need to really, in my mind, that we're really trying to to attack here. So I I I think, you know, again, I want to just reiterate that, I mean, this is, this is not perfect. We've learned some things in this last year, and that's what we set out to do. I think that the strategy that you've laid out, generally speaking, works really well, and I think we need to continue to do that. If there are speed measures that aren't working, then are working as well as they could be or could be modified in some way but still be effective, I think we should always be looking at that. One, sorry, just one last question. So with 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 narrowing of lanes, whether you do that by bollards or however you do that, I would imagine that one of the advantages of doing that over speed bumps is that it has the effect of making the driver feel that they need to slow down, which is very effective. And you're not going to get the outrageous speeds if you've got narrow lanes, regardless of whether you're coming up to a speed hump or not. It's a, it's a measure that takes place the entire length of the road, not just where the speed bump exists. Is that a correct statement?
Through Mr. Chair. Yeah, that is a correct statement. It has the effect of creating that side friction and making the driver more aware and more nervous to travel at those speeds. And now with the implementation of that center bollard on top of that, it really sort of helps to to create that side friction and narrow that down. Now, that being said, obviously, speed humps are physical, restrictions on the road as well, which force motorists to slow up at those points. But, you know, if there's space too far apart, sometimes you will get some very aggressive motorists who try to make up for that.
But the point is, with the two seconds I have left, I mean, you've got, basically, you're using the right tools in the right places. And that's the important thing to achieve the desired outcome. And I think that's what we really need to be looking at and appreciating how we execute it. I mean, we can play with that a little bit. But anyway, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a bit over time.
Thank you. Councillor Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I do, I didn't mean to give you the impression, what I was trying to say is, if you get a speed bumper right in front of your house, you might be upset about that. But generally, I get so many calls from people who want extras. So I completely concur with councillor Thompson's view. There are definitely more requests for more traffic commune and speed bumps on streets than we have. And I have a list, but I know you've got a website or an email where we have been forwarding them. I just want to confirm that you do receive requests from the public and you review those, right? Yeah.
Through Mr. Chair, yes. All the inquiries we received directly through traffic inquiries at richmondhill.ca are added to our screening process. So if we don't have data at those locations, the first step is to add them into our data, annual data collection program so that we can collect the data, and then we put them through our screening process and then prioritize them accordingly.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else for the second round. I did just want to make one additional comment, and that's in regards to the community information sessions that were being held. And I understand the logistics of trying to get the, you know, respondents out to these sessions, and particularly when you've got four new council members on this term, for us to get our social media up to speed and get the types and number of followers that will be looking at our particular pages so that we could announce those things, it's understandable that we're not getting the types of returns we we would like to see, particularly given that we don't have a print media newspaper any longer in Richmond Hill. But, you know, I I think we do have to try and figure out other ways to get to the community so that we do get more engagement. Those are my comments. We have a motion on the floor that was moved by Mayor West. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Cognizant of the time here, and also that in one hour and one minute, there's also going to be the emergency alert system going off, I think we should take a break at this point and come back at one o'clock if that works for everybody. Okay? Thank you. We'll be.